Good morning and welcome to the special city council meeting of July 31, 2007. We are going to be discussing fund balances, hopefully concluding this part of our continued series of study sessions. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Straman.
Here.
Wintaro.
Weaver.
Here.
Eusefion.
Mayor Najarian.
Here.
Mr. Starbitt.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, good morning. This is the second study session in what will likely be a series looking at the city's capital improvement needs and setting priorities for the upcoming year and the next several years. Foundational to that is having an understanding of the city's position relative to the resources available for capital improvements. For that reason, we started at the last study session last week and then continuing this week, hopefully wrapping up with an overview of the city's cash position, reserve position, fund balance position, and the city's numerous funds. And we sometimes use the word funds to mean money. We sometimes use the word fund to mean an accounting entity. In that sense, I'm using it as an accounting entity, the general fund, enterprise funds, intergovernmental service funds, capital projects funds, in the sense of those accounting entities. We had worked our way through about two-thirds of the city's fund entities, looking first the general fund and moving on through special revenue funds down to the enterprise funds, which are operations, we think of them as business operations, such as our parking fund, our sewer fund, refuse disposal, and GWP electric and water. I think we had gotten through the sewer fund and refuse funds?
Correct.
So we're down to GWP electric and water, two of the largest, actually one of the largest funds in the city is the electric fund. Well then, assuming we get through those and clean those up, electric and water, we'll then move into what's called the internal service funds. Ron Allers has done a yeoman's job of preparing information for each of these study sessions and taking us through the, how many funds did we get through? About forty, I think?
We got through about forty.
About forty, so you have fifteen or twenty to go, and then we'll have this foundational work wrapped up.
Since I wasn't here last week, where are you starting now?
We'll start on GWP. This table, Exhibit A.
Exhibit A, okay.
GWP electric, on the second page of that table.
Page two?
Page two.
Page two.
About halfway down.
Halfway down, okay.
You'll see it under the capital projects funds and enterprise funds down at the bottom, GWP electric, GWP water. And we'll start with electric.
Ron, back to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Starbitt. As Mr. Starbitt mentioned, the city does have over sixty funds that manage the various operations and capital projects of the city. We are in the middle of our enterprise funds, which are our businesses, and as a business, we charge a fee, be it for parking, sewer, or electric and/or water services, and we have expenses that are charged against those funds, and they provide for the capital infrastructure of electric and water, or whatever operation it may be. Right now, we are going to embark upon our electric fund. I have prepared a different PowerPoint presentation from the one last week. I did not print this out and pass it out to council. All it is is a mimic of this legal size Exhibit A that the council's already received, and this is so our public in the TV audience can see the numbers, because last week we were unfortunately not able to show them the numbers that we were all referring to. So if I will, I will start off with electric again. We have our own electric company here at the city of Glendale, and we've had this for close to a hundred years now. And as such, we have built up infrastructure by owning our own power plant. We have ownership to all of the distribution lines within the city that provide the electrical services to our customers, to our citizens, to our businesses. And with that, we have cash of $126,767,000 as of June 30, 2006. Our total fund balance is different from cash. Total fund balance is $327.8 million. What this fund balance represents is a huge investment in capital, not only in our power plant, but again, in all the lines that are overhead or in the underground, in all of our distribution system, the transformers, our substations. Actually, the GWP owns a lot of land in the city as well for their facilities. So the $327 million is actually broken out. We have a reserve, if you will, for principal and interest on debt. GWP electric has outstanding two bond issues, and so the $2.4 million that you see referenced here is a reservation for the following year's payment on the principal and the interest on that debt. The acronym SEAQMD stands for Southern California Air Quality Management District. We do have a reservation of $6,254,000 for emission controls on our power plant to adhere to the rules of the AQMD. And then here's our large number of investment in capital assets of $182,370,000. And what this reflects is the historical cost for our power plant and all the rest of the infrastructure, less accumulated depreciation. So this is our investment in our capital assets for this fund. That gives us an unreserved unrestricted net asset of $136,765. Notice that usually the unreserve unrestricted always is very close to the cash position of the fund. So here, we're approximately $10 million greater than the cash position of the fund. Policy or legal restrictions, we have always accounted for this electric fund as a enterprise. It's a business, and as such, we keep all the fund balance there. It's also restricted by charter that it can, we can only transfer so much out of the fund every year. So there are charter restrictions on this fund, and by policy, we charge a fee so that we can always be investing in our electric fund and paying for the operational costs of it. So that's why you see an available fund balance equal to zero on this fund. Any questions on electric?
So what is, historically, what is transferred to the general fund?
We are currently transferring out of electric approximately 12.5% of the gross operating revenue of the fund, not net revenue, but gross operating revenue of the fund, twelve and a half percent.
And the charter?
That is approximately $18 million this year.
And the charter allows up to 25%?
The charter actually says shell transfer, it's shell, transfer 25% unless the council wants to reduce it to remain, to keep the fund in a healthy position, in a financially stable position. So each year, on the last Tuesday of June, the council adopts a resolution that reduces that transfer from 25%, either down to twelve and a half percent to a percentage level, or down to a flat dollar amount, which we've done in the past as well.
Mr. Weaver.
Ron, historically, has any council in the hundred-year history ever transferred 25%?
Actually, we did find that in the 50s. I found one year in the 50s when we were doing a research back on when the Bradley Byrne sales tax came into effect, I found where one year the council did transfer the 25%. Historically, it's varied. We are at our highest level since that one-time transfer, 25%.
What has been the average over the last, I've been here eleven years, and this is the highest I remember it being?
We actually had seven or eight straight years of a transfer fixed dollar amount of $10.8 million, and that was dealing with the deregulation and the change in the industry. And then when that fell apart, literally, and we went back to our prior industry practice, it took a couple of years, and then we went to a percentage level, and then council increased the percentage up to twelve and a half percent, I believe three fiscal years ago.
That was, as I recall, that was about the time the state was having its financial issues. At least they'd reached a peak. The state still has financial issues, but it had reached a peak, and they were increasing the E-RAT shift, which is the education.
Revenue augmentation fund.
Revenue augmentation fund, which is a state's way euphemism for saying we're going to take city and county money and use it to meet the state's obligations for schools. At that time, we were losing additional funds from the state, and as a result, had to, had to look to the GWP transfer to meet a projected deficit in the general fund. At that time, the council approved a general budget policy that we'd take a fixed percentage, and the dollar amount would be adjusted based on CPI.
Correct.
Inflation each year. So the council had set that, at least at that time, the view of that as a ceiling, we'll adjust to nominal dollars to keep up with inflation, but that would be the maximum percentage. And we provided for you some feedback from the rating agencies the last time we issued bonds, and some of their comments about GWP's financial position. Generally, the rating agencies, although I think concerned about the level of transfer because it's significantly greater than any of our other neighboring municipal utilities that are generally in that five to seven percent range, but the rating agencies were generally comfortable with it only because the councils had a strong history of setting rates at what is necessary to keep GWP viable and to meet the debt service, and because we had established, and the council had approved, a policy on reserves and what levels we needed to keep and would maintain, and we had a long-range financial plan, frankly, that plotted for the next ten years, the picture in GWP and other funds. In fact, one of the rating agencies, Moody's or Standard and Poor's, made some rather glowing comments about the fiscal management in the city and the council's having been responsible for establishing rates that would keep the funds sound. And for that reason, although they were, I can't say concerned, but interested in the level of transfer, that they were comfortable in maintaining our relatively high rating because of the overall management approach taken by the city.
I remember those discussions, so it means that if we start fiddling and taking a higher percentage, our bond rating will probably suffer, there'll at least be a lot more interest.
Raise some eyebrows, perhaps.
Raise eyebrows.
Probably more importantly, I mean, that would certainly occur, but more importantly is it puts pressure on our rates at a time when we really can't afford to have any more pressure on our rates. Glendale used to be in the enviable position of being just about the lowest electrical rates of the competing municipalities, maybe with the exception of LA City, which has always had historically very low rates, but certainly much, much lower than our biggest competitor, which is Edison, Southern California Edison. I would say competitor even though we don't compete for business. But with the advent of increasing gas prices, our need to look at capital replacement, that edge that we've had in rates has really disappeared over the past ten years, and we find ourselves today with pressure on our rates, having to look at ways that we can maintain our competitiveness with our adjoining municipals and with Edison. And the staff has discussed with you and will in a review of our CIP program, the need to commit significant amounts of our resources into maintaining our infrastructure that has been neglected for many, many years in order to maintain our reliability. It's likely we'll need to have another bond in our future in order to fund that capital investment for infrastructure, and so we'll have the rating agencies again looking at our entire financial position, but particularly the transfer, the rates, and again, the council's approach to managing the finances for our electric utility.
So stability is the key thing in our transfers, et cetera.
That's what the rating agencies look for, but they also, as Mr. Starbitt mentioned, they look for rates to support the operating expenses and the infrastructure expenses of the fund. And if you think about it, one of the expenses that the city has historically had is this transfer to the general fund, albeit it has been increasing over time. So the rating agencies look favorably on that. We actually have an A-plus rating from all the rating agencies, which is quite excellent for the size of our electric utility. We were pushing for double A rating a year ago when we went out to bond, and the rating agencies did not grant us a double A. They even have different strata within, but basically what they told us is we're one of the best A-plus rated utilities. So, not quite for double A.
So let me just get back to my original question. In terms of dollars, not in terms of percent, how much was transferred to the general fund?
It was a little over 18 million for this last fiscal year.
And does that cash balance reflect the transfer as already effected?
That is correct.
So it would have been pre-transfer, whatever, 130?
Forty-four.
144, okay.
Do we have a projected balance for '07?
For '07?
Because we've drawn down our cash reserves quite a bit for our capital.
Right. Our '07 cash position is a little bit less, a little bit under $120 million. I don't have an exact number with me. But the electric fund is actually looking to break even, or maybe even come in at $1 million or $2 million of a net profit for June 30, '07 versus our two years of losses.
The city of LA raised refuse rates last year under the guise of providing funding to hire police officers, more or less. I think that that's in a nutshell. Are there restrictions on our ability to raise rates not related to the actual cost of electricity, infrastructure, and delivery? In other words, if we decided we wanted to?
Electricity, no, but other rates are, other rates are covered by Proposition 218.
Which would require a vote?
Well, depends on what it is. Refuse doesn't require a vote, requires a notice to all the individuals and essentially a protest, it's a majority protest provision. Doesn't necessarily require a vote. Electric is not covered by Proposition 218. Water refuse rates are covered by Proposition 218.
If we wanted to nudge up the rates and earmark the additional revenue for a statue commemorating the daughters of the American Revolution, could we do that?
With electric? Yes.
We could.
How about an aquatic park dedicated to the daughters of the American Revolution?
That's a new idea.
That too.
I didn't say that, but that might be more useful than a statue.
You could even add a little dog park to that aquatic center and you'd still use it for that, yes.
So legally, that's? Yeah, I'm putting my myopic legal blinders on here. Legally, yes. There may be policy considerations, obviously, that violate against that.
You still have the restriction on the charter that you can only transfer 25% of the gross operating revenue per year. So if we went up to that for one year, that would be approximately $18 million, which is a lot of money, and a huge drag on the electric fund as far as their cash resources.
You would, and you would want to look at what are the implications on rates for doing that. I don't, do we know offhand what a million dollars is in a rate, Dan, or anybody from
We've spoken of in the past of a one-cent kilowatt hour increase is approximately $10 million.
So that would be in the form of a rate. If we were to add, let's say, a tax, let's, you know, like a half percent, well, the whole UUT has been, has been thrown out anyway. You can't, well, it's not been thrown out, but you have to have a vote.
Have a vote.
Right. You have to have a vote of the people for utilities taxes, whether a special tax or a general tax, depending upon what it's going to be used for.
A special tax requires?
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds majority.
Yes, sir.
A general tax that isn't specified for its purpose requires a simple majority.
How about a bond issue? What are those?
It depends on how it's secured. A bond issue would depend on how it's secured. You have the ability to do revenue bonds without a vote of the people. If you're going to have a bond that's secured by a tax?
Or an assessment.
Or an assessment has to require a vote. An assessment would require a vote based on burden to the, of the assessment. A general bond issue secured by general taxes would require a vote of registered voters.
At what percent?
At what percent?
What threshold of success?
Same thing with an assessment, you're going to have, as Jim Starbitt said, I think it's two, I'd have to go back and check on 218 whether the assessment is two-thirds.
I think it's simple majority, it's a majority of the assessed valuation burden, I think.
With a special tax, it's two-thirds, with a general tax, it's 50%, plus one.
Yeah, it's interesting that 218 set it up that way. I've always thought it was somewhat counterintuitive, that a general tax that has no specificity ought to require a higher approval, as opposed to something where you specify what it's going to be used for. But I think the framers of 218 assumed that it would be harder to sell a general tax. It would be easier to get the public to agree to, let's just say, a special tax for police enforcement. Would probably be easier to get that, therefore, set the burden higher. So you'd be less likely to be successful, whereas the public's inclination to approve a general tax that just goes into the general fund for which they don't know exactly what it's going to be spent for, will get less public support. Therefore, you can set the, you can set the burden lower.
And that's exactly correct. There's actually some assessment, I shouldn't use the word assessment in this context, some analysis that actually discusses that. The Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Group and the like actually do talk about that, as well as the timing of the elections. Special tax requires that the election take place at one particular time. General tax is required that the election take place at a different period of time. Again, under the same analysis, that if the legislators want to put something like that on the ballot, they maybe have to run for election at the same time that that tax is pending.
Okay, very good. Let's press onward.
Next fund is our water fund, also in the Glendale Water and Power Purview. Our cash position in the water fund is currently $6,731,000 as of June 30, '06. As you can see, our total fund balance is quite a bit larger than that, at $88.1 million. The vast majority of that is our investment in capital assets of slightly over $80 million. That gives us unreserved unrestricted net asset for our water fund of $8,888,000, of which all of that by policy is restricted to this, to this fund. This fund also has the same restrictions that we just talked about with the electric fund, as far as the charter requirement of shell transfer 25% of gross operating revenue unless the council so declares, which we do every year at the, at the last Tuesday in June, to reduce that transfer down. The transfer is currently at twelve and a half percent. Again, it's, it's growing by that inflation factor that Mr. Starbitt talked about, that CPI factor. So we transferred $4,100,000 this last fiscal year, ending June 30, '07, to give you an idea. This fund also has quite a bit of capital infrastructure needs that are, that are required in the coming years, and we are actually figuring out a plan to go out to bond to pay for these capital infrastructure needs. And current plan has a, has a funding in place of going out to bond three times within the next six to seven years, and also having in that plan to pay for the debt service would be annual increases in our water rates to pay for this infrastructure and pay for the debt service on the bonds.
Several, several meetings back, council meetings, we were discussing a reservoir replacement in Chevy Chase to the tune of about $20 million. Was that about the ballpark?
Yeah.
Is that reflected at all in the restricted reserve, or that was coming out of general fund at the time?
No, the, it's coming, if you will, it is coming out of the cash position, which you can obviously see that there's only $6.7 million there. So the $25 million, or 20, I'm forgetting how much of the 20, what 20 million it is, but the dollar amount would have to come out of the cash position, and that's one of the reasons we were looking at going out to bond, was that the money in the water fund is not sufficient to pay for the infrastructure at the Chevy Chase reservoir.
And let me mention quickly the philosophy underlying the use of bond funds. These types of improvements in a utility, or any other enterprise fund, but particularly utilities, generally have a life far in excess of the life of the bonds. Probably the longest bond you'd be able to issue would be 30 years. Most of the improvements, whether it's, whether it's a major generation facility in GWP, or transmission lines, or underground vaults, or reservoirs in the water fund, they have a life far in excess of that 30 years. And frankly, the benefit of those kinds of upgrades are to our heirs and successors generations from now, in which case there can be a justification then for spreading that cost over future rates. Now, the most you can do is 30 years on a bond. Frankly, if you could do it longer, it might make sense to do it even longer, but as opposed to burdening current rate payers with the entire burden of all of those costs. If you have a situation like in the electric side of GWP where they have considerable reserves, cash reserves, then if you have enough surplus reserves, you could look at investing your cash in those improvements. Now, on the electric side, it doesn't take much of an improvement to eat up 30, 40 million dollars. Their stuff is very expensive and very big. The same can be said on the water side, maybe less so unless you're having to look at replacing a reservoir where, again, it can run 20 to 30 million dollars. But the water fund has not for a long, long time had the kind of capacity in reserves and cash that you see on the electric side. But then again, its needs generally haven't been as great until you come to an issue like the need to either build or replace a reservoir, or maybe cope with a water quality issue like we had with the water treatment facility over by Grayson. There, you're dealing with costs in tens, twenties, millions of dollars, and that just far outstrips what is, you know, relatively small water operation here. So those are things to keep in mind. If we were to look at the ability to draw upon, say, a greater transfer from GWP, you'd want to look at the implications on rates, because you could, you could at some point decide, let's, let's increase our transfer, and rather than increasing rates, we'll draw on the reserves to support the operations of GWP, which you could do. You'd then want to look at the reserve policy and how far down you'd want to draw them, and the implications on our capital replacement plan, and how much more you'd have to do in bonded debt recovery in order to fund that, or how much improvements you'd want to defer in order to have a greater transfer, in order to keep your rates at a level that you'd be comfortable with. So if there were interest in looking at the ways in which electric or water could contribute to capital projects outside of their arena through the transfer, then we'd want to come back with more information on just the implications of, of that decision, both on rates, reserves, and capital improvement programming and possible bonding.
Ron, could you go back to the electric slide? Okay, so we're sitting on $126 million cash. What is the worst-case scenario in terms of either physical failure or regulatory imposition that could hit our electric department? Worst case?
I'm going to have to defer to Mr. Waters on that one.
I mean, let's say a bomb blows up and knocks out all our generators, or electricity becomes socialized, nationalized. What is the worst case, and how does that relate to, I mean, within reason, of course?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Reality.
You know, it depends entirely on the type of emergency or disaster that occurs. I mean, if we would lose one of our major resources, our less expensive resources, that would be a severe problem. If we'd have something significant happen to one of the units at Grayson, which really meet our reliability needs, we might have to spend a lot of money very quickly to do repairs or maintenance.
So we have three, let me just sort of digress on that. We've got three operating generators.
Well, we have actually, one of them's down now, and most of them are pretty old, but we do have two combined cycle units that are operating and meet our needs. Most of our generation is actually purchased.
Those are the big workhorses. The combined cycle is the big workhorses that can run 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
And are pretty economic.
We just got the phone call. We just threw a bearing on both of those, and they've exploded. What are we facing?
We're going to have to probably go out and buy a lot of additional power on the market at probably a considerably higher price than we currently are producing.
And how about to rebuild or repurchase, repair the damaged units? Worst case?
We'd probably have to go out for bonding to raise some, some rapid cash to do.
Those base, those baseload generators are in the hundreds of millions of dollars.
Yeah. We also may have some insurance on, and I know we have insurance on the boilers, we may have insurance on the generators as well, up to a certain limit.
Let me, let me give you a sense of a real-life situation that occurred shortly after I came to Glendale. At that time, we had two transformers at our airway station that takes power directly off of LA City's backbone grid. That's where we get our electricity from the outside world, is through LA City's backbone system across the LA River and the soccer fields into the airway substation. These transformers are transformers- These transformers are transformers about a third the size of this room. These are very large transformers, of which we had two in place. I think each one handled like 180...
I'm not familiar.
80 megawatts. Anyway, these are very large transformers. One of those gave out. So suddenly, we were down to really only having one leg of our power coming in from LA City. We had to replace that transformer as quickly as possible. Now, "quickly" meaning it was going to take us about a year to get it back in operation. We concluded at that time that we, while we're doing that, we should go ahead and invest in a third transformer, which would give us another layer of redundancy if indeed we should have a problem with the airway substation. So we invested in two transformers and the line going, additional line going across the river. I think each of those transformers were in the neighborhood of $9 million apiece.
No, it wouldn't surprise me.
To purchase. And so we purchased two of those, plus the additional line across the river. So we were probably $20 million in that one recovery and upgrade. Our peaker generator that we installed four years ago?
Unit nine.
Unit nine, which was a peaker to replace an old peaking unit, which is a generator that helps you meet your peak loads. You turn it on, it can be turned on relatively quickly, then turned back off again when your loads go down. That was a $35 million project to replace one of our peaker units. So that's sort of the magnitude of dollars that you can deal in with this electrical equipment. It can be very expensive. Probably the greatest amount of burden on our system has frankly been the long-term avoidance of good replacement and preventive maintenance on our system, our underground vault system, our overhead transmission lines.
Or in the distribution system.
The distribution locally, that line that goes over the Verdugo's to Montrose, for example, that we're now in the throes of trying to replace to give us a second feed into the northern part of the city. Those are projects that, as we lined out in last year's capital improvement program, will put significant pressure on our cash reserves as we take some of those projects underway.
So unlike the water fund, which doesn't have that much in relation to potential infrastructure replacement, electric, we are talking 10 million here, 20 million there, 30 million, we're still fairly safe at that 126 level?
That's the policy now that has a cash reserve requirement for the electric system of $124 million is based on the kind of assessments we're talking about here, looking at risks, looking at the type of things that could happen. You know, you're not looking at that remote possibility, but, you know, such as a major earthquake or something, but you're looking at the type of things that could very possibly happen in the coming year. That's what that policy was based on when they arrived at 124 million.
Mr. Draymond.
Okay. Several things. One is, Mr. Waters, generally when a city or anybody else, engineers, work on projects, do they plan for the worst-case scenario, or do they plan for the obvious, most logical kinds of things that generally go wrong?
Well, I don't think it's really possible.
Let me preface that by saying that we have an engineer sitting up here who has taught me any number of times when I was standing out there that engineers do not plan for the worst-case scenario.
It's really not possible to, it's not affordable to plan for what would be the worst-case scenario. But I think you have to look at the type of scenarios that have occurred in the past, you have experience with, and you have to anticipate could happen in the future. So it's a judgment thing.
Another question. What is the generator out there that is sort of the, in the separate building down there with the sort of the jet engine in it that turns the turbine? What is...
Let me ask Ned Basson to come up to give you a correct answer.
That's probably the newer peaker unit that was installed, the one with the stack separate, kind of south of the main building?
That's correct. That's what we refer to as Unit Nine. It's a single-cycle combustion turbine.
And that is strictly, as Mr. Starber referred to, as a peaker unit?
Yes, it's a peaker unit.
And then, how often has the city operated its Grayson power plant, or how often does it normally with all generators working? How often is that necessary, and how often do we actually do that?
With all generators working, it is usually done during the summer. We do have a limitation that Unit Three, because of air quality emissions, we cannot operate Unit Three, Four, and Five all at the same time at high load because we run out of pounds per hour, pounds per day in emissions. But other than that, we use, very often use the units also for what's called spinning reserve. So they are down at low load, but they're needed to be able to pick up load in case of what's called a single largest contingency, which is a loss of another resource.
Mr. Basson, when I was out there not long ago, and you took me on that great tour, I also noticed they were rebuilding one of the generators.
Yes.
Are we in any dire straits right now because that's being serviced?
We had anticipated that when we just...
And this is, by the way, the middle of the summer?
This is the middle of the summer. So far, we've had a cool summer, and we haven't hit the kind of peak loads we've hit before. Unit Four is down, it is being overhauled, and there's generator, significant generator work that needed to be done. We have currently a substantial margin on our electric reserves, but we do have contracts that will be falling off in the next two to five years. And so the reserves that we currently have are something we have today, but we can't count on them for future years.
By reserves, he's referring to the electrical reserves?
Electrical reserves, yeah. So do I get the answer in there somewhere that we're not in danger at the moment of having our power grid locally, our power service go down?
From the standpoint of providing enough electricity, we are not having a problem.
And then lastly, how much of our power for our own needs here in Glendale, do we actually produce out of Grayson versus import?
The way we use Grayson is as an economic tool. We have the ability to produce the power when the price of gas has dropped. The price of gas has been very high for the last couple of years, and so we've produced a lot less power from Grayson than we did in prior years. We have, in the past, produced as much as a third of our power from Grayson. We are now down probably to about 10, I'm not sure of the number, but 10 to 15%. We have to keep at least one of the units of Grayson operating to burn the Shoal Canyon landfill, and we also use some of the units of Grayson at low load, again, for the spinning reserve, to be able to provide the backup. If we lose a transmission line, Unit Nine is able to come up to its load requirements in 10 minutes from a cold start.
So based on what you just said, it's actually economically in our best interest sometimes to import more, like when gas rates are high, to import power and not run our generator?
That's correct.
Ned, it might be useful, if we drew, if we added up all of our electrical resources that is available to us, including Magnolia, and Hoover, and IPP, and San Juan, and all of the sources that we have contracted, plus the maximum output from Grayson and our Unit Nine peaker, what would be our total amount of power that we'd have available to us?
It would be about 445 megawatts.
And our peak draw, and our peak record draw?
Our peak record draw was 336 megawatts last year. You're required by regulation to have reserves for the single largest contingency, which at the time that that happened was 70 megawatts. So we would need to have about 410 megawatts minimum at the time, and we were at capable 425.
So under the heading of a tiny bit of information, or a tiny bit of knowledge can be a dangerous, or at least an annoying thing, would you please pass my thanks along to Mr. Morehouse for his tutelage?
Thank you.
Mr. Weaver.
Since Mr. Draymond brought my name into it, best example that I can give from my experience, core of engineers, most flood control channels are designed to a once-in-a-hundred-year event. There's no way you're going to design a flood control channel to the maximum event that could occur. LA River, other projects, a once-in-232-year event is the maximum, but the size of the project that you would have to build would be so uneconomical, so expensive. You take the risk and design for something that will happen at once in 100 years. Flood control, if you get a once-in-a-hundred-year event, you're going to get sheet flow in some places, you might get people displaced, not likely to affect their personal safety because the water stage is going up and you're getting people out. But electrical is something different. Can you afford to take the risk of that big one? If we do, it's not like a river stage that goes down, you're back to cleaning up within a few hours. Electrical, if you don't set money aside for the worst-case scenario, or what we consider a legitimate risk, you're not going to be back up to service of the people with it. So I can understand having more money set aside for a potential risk within reason than you do in the design of a flood control channel. That's just one example.
Mr. Draymond.
Well, just so you know, Mr. Weaver, that I have actually been listening to you when I've been out there before coming here.
Well, bless you, bless you.
Well, number two, but that, what you just said is a little different than what our folks just...
It is?
Yes. They were just saying that you generally don't plan for the worst-case scenario.
I didn't say that.
No, but I'm saying, the implication I'm getting, all of this under the heading, by the way, that I'm getting back through emails and phone calls, is if you're looking for CIP money, don't look here, which I think is part of what is at play. If you don't mind me saying, I don't mean with you specifically, Mr. Weaver.
You're on the learning curve.
I just mean, well, I admit, I am on the learning curve, and as you put it the other day, green, however, I wasn't plopped...
To tell the public, I said that, too.
I wasn't plopped here, and like a potted plant, Mr. Weaver, I've grown up in this city like you, and have been extremely involved in a great many departments in this city long before being elected. So my point is that I've heard over the years, every time we have looked at a variety of areas of our budget for needs in the city, if it's something that is not a desirable project by some, or desired by some, the answer is, hey, don't look there. There is the potential of catastrophic disaster waiting out there. We don't operate that power plant at full capacity. We just don't. We don't do that. And that's the whole lesson there. It would be silly for a city this size to operate its system only efficiently if every cylinder is hitting, and we clearly don't do that. We have a major generator down right now that's being rebuilt. We're fine. We're not in any dire straits. We also, when economic need presents itself, we import power because it's less expensive and more efficient to do that. And so, you know, again, under the category of, don't look for funds here, I can't, as an elected official, look at this process and say, well, we may have a nuclear explosion, so therefore, we can't provide for other needs within this city. And this isn't directed at you, Mr. Weaver, this is just a comment to the public, because I'm getting a lot of emails and a lot of phone calls related to what I am picking up as a competitive issue, or competitive undercurrent at this dais during these meetings, particularly as we're talking about these reserves, that it's a "we'll educate you" kind of thing. And it's a little annoying, I'm going to say.
All I can say, defense, I haven't been here for all these hearings. Last week, I couldn't be.
That's why I'm saying it's not directed at you.
Yeah, but I've been here long enough to know that the public would like us to take every bit of reserve that we have and spend it one time, spend all the money. I grew up in a conservative environment, in a conservative city, who has kept reserves. And I understand the pressures are there by not only the public, but by some council members that would like to spend all those reserves, one time, bam, gone. And no reserves in this emergency, then what? Well, we don't intend to take all, but we didn't take 18 million before either. I watched that grow and grow and grow. And people keep saying, oh, the city's got a lot of money, deep pockets, go buy all that open space land, spend 40, 50 million, oh, go build this, go that, build that. The city's got a lot of money, just take it out of the reserves. Well, I'm just saying, no, Mr. Draymond, I'm never going there. I may be on the losing end of a lot of votes, but I believe that the reserves at this city and councils for countless decades before have built up is sound. And I'm willing to look at it. I continue to get educated myself. I understand exactly where you're coming from, Mr. Draymond. I think it is education process. I went through it for years. I was green, and I'm just being realistic. I was, I learned, and I'm still learning. And I'm convinced that what we're doing in the city is the right way to approach things. You have your own opinion, that's fine. I just, I won't go down the road of trying to find reserves for special projects for certain groups or whatever, because we hear them every Tuesday. Do this, do this, do this. You've got plenty of money. And I'm tired of hearing the city has plenty of money to spend for special interest groups.
Well, let's go to the next slide, because I think that is directly on point as we talk about the amount of reserves, and apparently, there's a policy out there, and...
Policies can be changed.
With 100 and, right, and let's find out how we achieve that and what the foundation is for it, and take it from there.
Mr. Mayor, we have actually adopted cash policy for Glendale Water and Power. The first policy was adopted, I believe, approximately three years ago, and this last adoption by the council was on August 29th, a year ago, 2006. And with this, we have four categories of reserves in the electric fund. One is an operating reserve of 57.7 million. Secondly is a contingency reserve of 40.4 million, a gas reserve project of 16 million, and this is natural gas, not gasoline, but a natural gas reserve project for 16 million. And then fourthly is a rate stabilization of 10 million. The rate stabilization is for volatility that we experience in either the price of power or the price of natural gas, which would then fuel our power generation. So the total amount of these reserves accumulate to 124.1 million. So as of the end of last year, June 30th, '06, we were 12.7 million above our stated reserve policy for the electric fund.
Okay, let me ask, with regard to the net assets of 136, why aren't we using the cash, the cash figure of 126, 126 million, in terms of the available? There's two components, how much we have, what the reserves are set at, the 124 million, and what's available.
Right.
So the net asset component consisted of what? I know you said it's almost the same.
I'm sorry. Net asset is our total fund balance, and we have to subtract out, which the major one is our investment in our capital assets of 182 million. If you will, this unrestricted, unreserved net asset is our working capital. So it includes our cash of 126 million, but it also includes what will quickly become cash, which is our bills that we've sent out, that we haven't actually physically received the cash for. Plus, we subtract out our payables, which is, which are expenses that we have incurred, invoices that we have received, but we actually haven't physically written the check to pay those vendors. So that is our unreserved, unrestricted. So it is cash, plus what will soon become cash within 90 days, 120 days.
Okay. If you could go back to the next slide then, and let's go to Mr. Draymond.
Yep, so to continue along the theme, since this is on point, operating reserve, contingency gas reserve, rate stabilization. We did a project in Montrose recently, within the last few years. About $1 million was spent out of unallocated GWP reserves. That's where the money came from. Did we damage our operating reserve, our contingency gas reserve, our rate stabilization, or any other project within GWP? Did it hurt our bond rating? Did it do anything adverse to the city to spend those funds? Because I know what it did to benefit the city, I want to know what the cost was to the city. What it did for the city was...
Lighting?
Yeah, well, sidewalks, lighting, road improvement, traffic signals, et cetera, up there. It... It, it created stability within the retail community. It grew business there by more than 40% in four years, or over those years, however many years that's been, three, four years.
The lights?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, it wasn't just lights. Lights, road improvements, sidewalk improvements, traffic signal improvements, trash receptacles, et cetera.
I thought the shopping park association got credit for that.
Every time you heard me, Mr. Mayor, we gave an award to your former colleague, Mr. Manukian, for his role in, in support of that project, the shopping park at our Founder's Day. You may not have heard about that, but that's...
I'm digressing.
That is, that is what we did, because of the support of this council and this, and this city. But that's where the funds came from. So I want to know, since all of this has been tossed out, did it hurt our bond rating? Did it affect our operating reserves, our contingency? Do we go down a slippery slope? Have we been spending like drunken sailors? What, what's been going on? And also, the last question is, what is the purpose in general of the reserves?
The, the answer as relation to GWP is, no, it didn't do any of those things. In, in a fund and operation of this size, $1 million isn't going to put you in that position. And it may be likely that maybe $10 million isn't going to put you in that position. But $10 million every year for a period of time could put you in that position. But $1 million, no. And as I noted in a conversation recently with you, Mr. Draymond, that's one of the advantages that Glendale has. It's a very large operation. And so there are ways you can find to solve a million-dollar problem. It's challenges where you've got, challenges facing you, numerous ones that are 10 and 15 million dollars, that even that starts to stretch our capacity to absorb. But in GWP, one of the significant benefits of the city owning the electric utility is it gives you tremendous capacity, not just to address electric utility needs, but also the benefit of owning the utility so the general fund can reap a dividend on its investment and the rate payer's investments. And it gives us one more in significant increase in just the general fiscal capacity of the city to look at how we can solve the problem. It may be a, frankly, relatively small problem like a million dollars, which in, in the overall city budget of $580 million, to go figure out a way to solve a million-dollar problem, that's much more achievable than you'll find in a much smaller city. And it's operations like GWP that give us that kind of size and capacity, so a million-dollar problem can be solved more easily. When the problems become 10, 15, 20, 30 million dollars...
Sustained period.
Over sustained period, that becomes much harder for us. And, and I will tell you, our interest, we may, we may be sounding like we're trying to drive the council to the conclusion of, don't spend the money. As I noted earlier at the start of the discussion last week, my personal philosophy is, it does you no benefit to just amass money for the sheer purpose of amassing money. That doesn't do the public any good. It doesn't do the city any good. We need to make sure you understand all the implications. It's up to you to make the policy choices, and we respect that. We just need to bring to you all of the implications and all of the information so you can make the decision that you feel is best for the community.
Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, just to clarify, I'm sure, Mr. Draymond, you know what I'm going to say, but just to clarify, my belief is, when we adopt a budget, it's based on studying the priorities that we, as council, feel are correct and what the community has told us. Once that budget's together, other than an emergency, a safety issue, I prefer to stay within the budget. When the item came up about Montrose and we talked about lighting and the sidewalks obviously have to be done in the streets, it climbs to one and a half million. What I was concerned about is, do we have a safety issue? I was told by staff after researching, no, we did not. I looked in the budget to find what was in for street lighting. For the entire city was 200, and I think, 236,000 for the entire city. So my position was, well, roll it into the next budget cycle, and the majority of the council feel that spending the million and a half dollars there is a higher priority than other needs for lighting and streets. Hey, I'll climb on the bandwagon and vote for it. It was a fact, it was not a safety issue, it was not in the budget. So by my conservative nature, the fund should not have been appropriated. It's done, it's after the fact, it looks great up there. I think we have improved Montrose a lot. I like it. It's just the process of how we got from here to there. And when we decided to, we turned to staff and say, find the money. And staff concluded that the place to take it out of the reserves was water and power. And that's what the majority of council voted for. And I knew taking a million and a half out of that fund wasn't going to kill us. I just wouldn't have done it at that time.
Ron, let me ask you a question. On your Exhibit A, page two of two, on the GWP electric line, why don't we have an available fund balance, then? If you say we've got 12 million, that's...
Right.
Set up.
Right.
Microphone, Jim.
So the line, policy or legal restrictions, that, that's the policy on reserves, which is the 124 million dollars, plus your other principal and interest deposits, plus the money we're holding for the SCA QMD. Right, Ron?
The, correct, in, but it's also the idea that these are all enterprise funds, and that we keep all the revenue in the enterprise funds for the operations and infrastructure of those funds. We do have transfers that are set by council policy that come out of electric and water, and a million that comes out of sewer, actually.
So you keep it until we take it away? You're not giving it up voluntarily?
Well, it's your money.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's all set by council policy, subject to outside restrictions, either by the charter or by Prop 218 or what have you. But all this is set by council, by council policy or by past practice.
And what, what you're seeing here is you're seeing the balance sheet for the utilities. What you don't have before you is the budget, which is, given the amount of revenues we will take in in a given year, what your staff would say we should be spending on operations and capital replacement and debt service. That's the, that's sort of the income statement side of the electric utilities. You're seeing the balance sheet at a point in time, June 30th, 2006, and as Ron mentioned, things like receivables, debts that we have outstanding short-term, those are going to change on a month-to-month basis.
Okay.
So you're getting a snapshot, looking really just at the balance sheet accounts for the electric utilities.
Correct. Okay, let's move on.
Okay. If I could just digress one more moment, Mr. Mayor. And we touched on the electric, the adopted cash policy, and here's the adopted cash policy for water. And you can see here, again, net assets of 8 million, and then our reserves that add up to 11 million. Mr. Starburn mentioned a number of minutes ago, water for, I don't know how many decades, has really not had sufficient cash. And they've actually have gone quite a number of years in the 90s, when we built up our reclaimed water system, they actually went into negative cash, and they basically borrowed from the electric fund. But the water fund has consistently not had enough cash just to meet these reserves or just kind of meet what you would call just normal, normal operating cash for the, for the fund of its size. It is a $40 million operation, and to have $8 million in, in cash is really not sufficient. It should at least be this 11 million that's been established by council policy, if not more. So just wanted, since we talked about the electric cash policy, I just wanted to finish up with water.
So what happens to that? Do we make up for that? Next budget cycle, or...
We have actually been growing in cash for the last seven years. We've been growing in cash, and as of June 30th, '07, we will be a little bit less than this 8 million. We had some, we spent on our capital infrastructure this last year more than our net income, so we'll be down a little bit in cash. But we have been consistently growing in cash in the water fund.
We've been, we've been trying to get there over years. And in an enterprise fund like water or electrical, it's a balancing of a number of factors. Rates, the amount of operating costs, particularly what you're, in the case of water, what your water's costing you will be a big impact. In, in utilities, it'll be the cost of natural gas or what your purchased electricity is costing you. But balancing your rates, which affects your revenues, with your operating costs, with what you'd like to do each year in your capital replacement. And that's where the water fund has really struggled, is not, not having unreasonable rate increases, although you've implemented some fairly significant rate increases, but not having unreasonable rates, yet having enough resources to meet your operating costs, your capital replacement, and then over time, tuck enough money away annually so we can eventually get the 11.3 million dollars.
Correct.
And we're just not there yet.
Okay. Okay, that finishes up our enterprise funds. Our next series of funds are called internal service funds. And what these funds are is, they service the entire city organization, if you will. And there's actually three different groupings of these funds. One is our replacement funds, which either replace our moving stock, police cars, fire engines, helicopter, or they replace our computer infrastructure or computer software. Our next category of funds is our insurance funds. We are self-funded insurance for a medical plan, a dental plan, or vision plan, but also we are self-funded up to certain levels for workers' comp, general liability insurance, and the likes. And then our third category in this, in internal service funds, is more operating funds, where we have three operations that actually charge all the rest of the city based on usage. And we'll talk about those three funds as well. So the first fund is our equipment reserve fund. This is all of our rolling stock for the general fund. This is all of our general fund vehicles, if you will, police cars, the vehicles in parks, the vehicles in public works, fire trucks, library bookmobile, and so forth. And it's just general fund. All the other funds in the city pay for their vehicle replacement out of their cash. So the transit fund pays for all the beeline buses. We just got done talking about electric and water. They have a number of vehicles, a quite large fleet, so they pay for it out of their own cash position, and that is an investment...
They don't have a reserve?
Correct. They do not have reserve funds at all for their equipment. They pay for it out of their, out of their cash. And it's actually an investment in capital, because vehicles will last five years, seven years, or longer, depending on usage and the type of vehicle. So this is just to replace rolling stock in the general fund only. Our cash position is 13 million. And we have a policy or legal restriction. Again, this is by policy, we set aside this money every year from the, from the general fund. We put it in this fund. This fund has built up cash over time, and it is for the replacement of general fund vehicles, which is the largest fleet we have. We have police, fire. Fire's not a large fleet, but it's a very expensive fleet, as you know. And then public works, those are the largest fleets that we have.
Ron, like, unlike, or like, our radio equipment, which was too low. We didn't have the reserves. Where, I'm trying to recall back, our reserves on the equipment was low, too, wasn't it?
It is low. We had a study...
Still is. But it was lower, right?
Right. It was lower. When we had that study done by Arroyo Verdugo, we had approximately $6 million in cash in this fund. So, and at that time, back in around 2000, I believe they had us, oh, God, the number's old, but I believe it was in the 30s that we needed.
Recommended by an outside...
Recommended, right.
Group. Should be around 30, and we're one-third of that.
Yeah. And with today's prices, I don't even, I can't even hazard a guess. But we have been replacing our vehicles, and we have, this has been building up, so most likely, we will enter a period of time where this might even go down as we come to another cycle of replacing some expensive vehicles.
That, though, as we did with the last round of fire equipment purchases, which was fairly significant, six, six units, as I recall?
It was six vehicles, $4 million.
Millions of dollars in equipment replacement, which would have put even greater strain on this fund. We looked at the mechanism of lease purchasing that equipment, so we could spread the payments out over seven years or so? I forget the number. But we could spread out the payments, continue to put our money into the reserve fund, and in that way, shore up the fund so it wasn't in one year taking a real big hit. We also got a very favorable rate on the lease purchases.
3.51.
Yeah, 3.5. So today, we are probably making money on the money that we've kept in this fund as opposed to having spent the cash for equipment. And on the really big purchases, we'll continue to look at those, those options and alternatives. So we can keep this, this fund in as good a condition as we can, even though, based on the overall study, we should have considerably more. We will continue to look for mechanisms that will leverage our, our purchasing power with this fund.
The next fund is just to replace our helicopters. So at the end of June 30th, '06, we did have $2 million in cash in the fund. We have spent over $1 million this last fiscal year, 2006, '07, to replace the helicopter. And so this fund will show it being around $1 million for June 30, '07.
It will get an infusion here in '07, though. '07, '08, with the consolidation with Burbank. Burbank is going to be paying us about $750,000 for its, its share of the newest helicopter that essentially we'll be sharing with them. So this fund will get an infusion and that payback. And then we can evaluate this fund based on our sharing of the helicopters, as to how much we really should have in this fund. At that time, we'll be able to evaluate it, and maybe it'll, maybe it'll need more, maybe it won't need as much, in which case, you can decide what to do with the additional resources.
What we've also done with this fund is that it also pays for the major capital parts of a helicopter, be it a tail rotor or another major component. That was a change that we affected about four years ago, so that we wouldn't go through the volatility of all of a sudden coming up with 250,000 or 300,000 out of the general fund capital outlay account to pay for a major component of the helicopter.
And, and that ongoing burden should go down as well with our consolidation with Burbank.
Correct.
We'll be sharing all of those costs.
Correct. Technology Equipment Replacement Fund has cash of $94,000.
It might be useful in our interest of time. I'm not sure we need to spend, it's up to you, but I'm not sure we need to spend a lot of time on these smaller funds that have $100,000 in them.
No, let's skip that.
Why don't, why don't we touch on the...
Sure.
On the ones that are millions of dollars?
Okay. So application is also small.
That would take us down, for example, down to the uninsurable litigation is the next major one.
Right. So these are all the remaining of the, of the replacement funds. Unemployment insurance, we're self, we are self-funded for unemployment insurance, 400,000. Uninsurable litigation fund has cash of 5.4 million, and we have a fund balance of a positive 2.3 million. So this is, we have cash enough set aside for the liability, which you don't, which you don't see in here because of the, the balance sheet part of it. So there's plenty of cash to pay for the, for the estimated payables out of the uninsurable litigation.
So the roughly 3.1 million, the difference between...
Correct.
The cash balance and the 2.3 is essentially what we've identified is the needed reserves to cover existing known litigation and claims?
As of June 30th, '06.
As of June 30th. So we do an assessment of the claims we have, the litigation we're involved in, the attorneys help us do an assessment of what our exposure is, and essentially, that money is reserved so that we'd be able to meet those prospective costs. Now, when a given claim or litigation is resolved, maybe we're on target, maybe we've saved a little bit, maybe it's actually cost us a little bit more. But that 3.1 million is essentially those claims that are outstanding that have yet to be resolved.
And I'll add one little bit. It is also what is referred to as IBNR, sorry for the acronym, incurred but not reported. So that is a, a term that reflects that there potentially will be a claim for the fiscal year that ended June 30th, '06, but that has not been reported to the city as of yet. So it's an unknown claim out there. So we do that based on an historical analysis of when the claims actually come in versus when it was actually incurred.
Is that number right, Scott? 3.1?
We actually...
Without speaking about a particular case, we've got some litigation... Without speaking about a particular case, we've got some litigation currently that could be pretty hefty.
I would have to go back and pull the, our report that we give to finance. In fact, I have it in one of my drawers. I can go pull it. It seems a little low, but I'd have to go pull the report.
Oh, you're right. I mean, it strikes me, there are some exposures out there, the 3.1 seems awfully low, but I'm not sure what was based on on June 6. We may find on June, I mean, June 2006, we might find June 2007, the picture is very different.
Well, this is one of three funds, too. So it could be accurate relative to this particular fund. It seems low, knowing some of the types of cases that would fall within this category. But I would actually have to go back and look at our report, and I would assume Ron has.
Fees come out of that as well, right?
Fees come out of that, but we're not, and that's one thing we've been discussing in the last couple of months, are ways to actually include the fees in this. I don't think the fees are actually included in this current report. They have not been in the past, but we've actually discussed including those in there now, at least the estimate of costs for outside counsel. Because we have incurred some significant fees in a couple of, what I'll call non-GWP cases.
And once again, you're looking at the balance sheet. You need to get a really clear picture, you'd want to touch base with the budget to see how much we've, or how we've adjusted our rates to the various operating departments, so you see the kind of cash flow that's going in, which can meet some of those ongoing expenses, in order to get a sense of how much then is either being added or taken away from our existing reserves.
Correct.
But at the end of the day, this fund, you know, this fund doesn't have a lot of capacity, and there's not a tremendous amount of resources sitting there that could be tapped.
As Mr. Howard mentioned, we do have three funds that make up our liabilities. This is one of them, the uninsurable litigation. The next one is our general liability fund. It has cash of $1,400,000. It has a fund balance of a negative 5.7, which if you just add the two numbers, you can see that we have a roughly $7.1 million liability or payable out there. That's claims incurred, or claims that we are accruing for, that we know about. And again, we also have our famous IBNR incurred but not reported number as well for this. So this is a 7.1 million in general liability.
I'm sorry, this is.
This one sounds correct.
This is liability insurance. That's not exactly what, this is general liability.
General liability. Again, we're self-insured for up to certain levels, where we do purchase excess insurance. Our third fund is our auto insurance fund, and this handles all of our, all three funds actually handle all of the claims for the entire city, all operations. All the funds pay a premium into these three insurance funds, if you will, from electric and water to our transit fund to general fund. All the operating departments pay into these three funds. So auto insurance, we assess a premium to all the operating departments that actually have vehicles. We have cash in this fund of 2.3 million. We have a fund balance of a positive 1.1. So that leaves us with the payables or claims accrual of approximately $800,000 in this fund. So these are our three, if you will, our three liability insurance funds. With that, I'll move on. Our next largest, or actually probably our largest fund in here besides our employee benefits, is our compensation insurance fund. This is our workers' comp. Again, we are self-insured up to $2 million for workers' comp, where we buy excess insurance above the $2 million. That is per claim. And we have cash of $8.9 million. However, we have a negative fund balance of 4.8. So that leaves us with a $13,600,000 as a payable or a claim of all the, how do I want to put this? It's just, it is our liability for all the outstanding workers' comp claims. So it includes all future medical, as well as future payouts for all the known claims, plus, again, our IBNR for workers' comp.
And Ron, we've, as a result, we've adjusted our rates that get charged to the various departments, too, over time begin to correct this.
Yes, we're actually in the middle of our rate study, so we will be adjusting rates, maybe even mid-year, this current fiscal year, to account for this.
Which will have an impact on everybody's budgets, but this is a fund that we have to watch very closely. And these are all like insurance funds. You have to have adequate balances here. In this case, this one is far out of balance in the wrong direction.
Right. We are, we do have, with workers' comp, you do pay out over a number of years. So our cash position is, while it's nowhere near the claims payable, it is sufficient so that we will not run into negative cash, which would definitely be a serious problem. But as Mr. Starbird mentioned, we need to be increasing our cash into this fund in order to set aside enough for all the liability that we haven't incurred. Dental insurance, we have three dental plans, and we are self-insured for one of those plans.
Let me suggest we just skip over those and get down, because they're just not, they're not sizable to any extent.
Sure.
And get down to employee benefits, which is the, which is really the only remaining fund with any substantial resources in it.
Correct. We have cash in here of $8.4 million. We have a negative fund balance of 5.8. What the employee benefits pays for, it pays for the retiree health savings plan, so this is our retiree medical insurance for the city employees. And it also sets aside the cash for our liability related to vacation hours that have been accumulated by our employees, as well as our comp time hours that have been accumulated by our employees.
So the deficit position in this one reflects a need to, what, increase our contribution rates again from the operating departments?
Yes. Yes, it does. And we are looking at that. We are actually having an actuarial study is starting for June 30, '07, to see if we need to increase our rates for the retiree health savings. When we started on that plan in 2001, we had embarked on a, one, we had to recognize an unfunded liability similar to what we have in PERS. And we set on a course to pay that unfunded liability off over 20 years. So we recognized unfunded liability, and we said, okay, we'll pay it off like a mortgage over 20 years. We'll pay a little bit extra each year in order to reduce that down to zero after 20.
When you read the stories about particularly counties and cities that have extended significant retiree health benefits, this would be the comparable fund in those cities where you'll see hundreds of millions of dollars of potential exposure. In the case of, I think it was Orange County or LA County, billions of dollars of eventual exposure that's unfunded. And the reason ours is this size is because we have not extended significant benefits to retirees for health. So this number is very small.
Right.
It's a good position to be in, frankly.
Yes, it is. And that rounds out our internal service funds, because the rest of the funds are small dollars. Last week, if I can, I'll comment on a few of these last slides that I created. We were talking about the general fund surplus deficit, and we got into actually quite a lengthy discussion. Here's a chart going back to 1980 of the surpluses and deficits of the general fund. And you will notice the $6.5 million here in 1992, followed up by a little over $2 million deficit. This was the recession. It was a compound of a number of things. It was the recession, so our sales tax dollars went down. It was where EREF was born, Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund, where the state came in the first year in '92 and took $3.5 million. And that was ongoing. And then we had also other revenues that did not come in as anticipated or as estimated. So that's what these four years are actually reflecting, these two specifically for the state.
So in those cases, Ron, the dip into reserves was to support general operations.
Correct.
For the most part. So there, we might have anticipated the revenues, but they didn't materialize. The state took some of the revenues away from us, and by the end of the year, we were having to dip into reserves to actually support basic operations. A very different scenario than what occurred in '04, '05, and '06.
Correct. These scenarios are, we are adhering to Gatsby Statement Number 34, which did away with what is called an equity transfer, where we could take reserves from the general fund and transfer it to our capital projects fund to buy open space or to invest in other projects.
Before, that wouldn't have shown up as an expenditure. It would have been a transfer.
Correct.
Whereas Gatsby required that you reflect these essentially like an operating expense.
Correct. So these transfers reflect the, these deficits in the general fund actually reflect investments in assets that the city bought, be it open space. It was mainly open space for these three years. So projects such as Oakmont, which is the '04 number, Murchison, Holson, what else? Flint Canyon.
Yeah.
Those major open space areas that the city purchased are reflected in these three negative numbers.
If I can.
Sure.
So Gatsby essentially makes you categorize this like a deficit. If this were an enterprise fund, you wouldn't see it as a deficit, because it's merely a transfer of one asset to an asset of a different form. You've taken cash, and you bought land for it, and you'd be holding your land as an asset. And essentially, your cash balance would go down, but it wouldn't be labeled a deficit position.
That is correct. It's the difference between a governmental fund and an enterprise fund. Here's where I was trying to talk about last week, our original estimate on our revenues versus the actual revenue. And you can see here in '92, our original estimate was higher, and in '93, it was a lot higher, our original estimate. And our actual revenues went down from one year to the next. That's the state taking EREF and sales tax and some other revenues actually decreasing. And you can see that even from this year on down, we didn't start increasing for four years in our actual revenues, even though we were dealing with this scenario by, we had increased our transfer from electric and water during this time, and we had increased, we actually begun to transfer from our capital projects to the general fund. Our revenues were still decreasing or barely keeping the same, even with the increased transfers from other funds.
So unlike the state, where they began to get into trouble because they were making assumptions about revenues that were based on short-term performance that they were projecting over a long term and was unrealistic, they then found themselves in trouble when their revenues didn't materialize. We have had a pretty consistent policy of being very conservative in our revenue estimates, or the darker line, which generally gets succeeded in actuality by the end of the year with revenues being stronger than what we based our operations on. We don't want to be in the state's position where we're making fairly overly optimistic assessments of our revenue, only to find ourselves falling short, and then having built our ongoing operating expenses in a structure that can't be supported by our revenues.
Correct.
Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Starbird, when were you hired? What year?
1998.
So you were starting to work on the budget then. Every single year, actual revenue exceeded estimate.
Well.
And, I mean, that was the philosophy of being conservative, what you just said.
I think Glendale.
You'd rather be that way than the other way.
Glendale's conservative philosophy preceded me. The period of 91 through 97 was a very unusual cycle. And I heard, I read a book once by a gentleman who headed up, who headed up a major corporation in the United States, who said, frankly, it's all about cycles. You can be successful if you arrive at the beginning of the right cycle. You can be a failure if you arrive at the beginning of the wrong cycle. And cities are no different than that. But I think what's happened, this chart reflects a very conservative approach to, again, not doing what the state did, and for which is still paying a price, of building a structure around an overly optimistic assessment of revenues. But again, if we enter into a phase like we did from '89 through '96, '97, another huge recession like that, we will face serious problems in trying to balance our revenues with our operations. And you'll see the same kinds of cutbacks that we went through back in those days.
Correct. So this is our estimate on the revenue side versus actual. Oh, that's nice.
So is that gap the $8 million that you had referenced earlier?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Where did I go? There you go. Okay. Here's the other side of the equation. Here's our operating expenses. And again, our appropriation is in the dark purple, and then our expenses is in the turquoise. And you can see, for the most part, our actual expenses are less in our appropriations. Here, they're out. This is the original appropriation that the council adopted. Here is Oakmont, which was not in the original plan. And the same way with the other land purchases, that's why you're seeing it exceed. I went from original adopted budget to what actually occurred. What I probably should have done is taken out those land purchases, so you can see the operating expenses. That's my fault on that. I should have done that as an aside. I don't know why I am doing this. Pardon me. Last slide, here's our general fund, fund balance. This is a two-part, and you can barely see it, my apologies. On the left side is the scale. These are nominal dollars. These are in millions. I forgot to put the header up here at millions. And it reflects the bar chart, so you can see our general fund reserve back in 1980 was about $23 million. And then up to now is a little, about $54, $55 million. The line is a percent. And here's the percent scale over here, which you can't see, but it's ending up at the 34%, which is a take on the chart that we spoke about last week, which was just all numbers. But you can see that we started off around 60%, went up to 70%, and we've gone down. Here's the recession of the early 90s, where we dipped into our reserves. And here's a dip into the reserves for the open space.
Again, Ron, if we overlaid this line on either the revenue or the expenditure portion of the budget, as was pointed out, in the past 10 years, we've gone from a $90 million general fund budget to a $160 million general fund budget. The reserves nominally haven't grown as quickly, but they are still more nominal dollars, considerably more nominal dollars than we had 10 years ago.
Correct.
The percentage has gone down, in part, because the size of the budget has grown significantly.
Correct. The percentage line, if you will, kind of takes into account inflation and the growth of the general fund budget, and what the general fund actually pays for now versus what it paid for 10 years ago or 20 years ago, because the general fund does morph and change over time as to what it pays for. And that was it. Yes, that is it for the presentation.
Okay, I have a speaker. Why don't we bring Mr. Allen up? How much time do you need, Mr. Allen? We have an 11:15 expiration date.
Oh, nothing more than an hour and a half.
What's your second?
Actually, very, very short. First of all, I'm Barry Allen, and I think this study session is great. I see we are missing two. Not too bad. One of the things that I noticed, and maybe it was the angle that I was sitting on, it appeared that the fund balances and the compensation and liability insurance were June 30, 2006. Was I right or wrong?
All of these are June 30, 2006.
Okay, but yet the final, the cost of the, in the funds, showed 2007, June 30. So there's a year. Now, obviously, you must have talked about the differences and why the individual charts were a year earlier and were now a year later. How much do those funds change in that one-year period? How much money do we put in and not? And also, the other issue that I'd like to bring up is that I didn't see any documents for the public to be able to review while you were at the entrance table. So I would like to get a copy of the materials that were used today.
This was at the table last week and prior. Okay, did I forget to send out this week?
So we worked off the same table.
Yes, it was the same sheet.
And it contains the same information. It was on the PowerPoint presentation.
It does contain exactly the same information.
Your copy has been adjusted slightly, Mr. Allen.
I was curious about that. But I would like to know the, why the difference is, and as I say, you probably had discussed them, but I think that if you're looking at 630, 2007, all of your slides should be accordingly to the same date and not a year prior, because I think that you're looking at one set of numbers, and a year later, there must be another set of numbers. Thank you.
Let me give the explanation for that. The charts you saw on revenues and appropriations versus expenditures are budget numbers. And you've finished, you've just adopted your '07, '08 budget, and you concluded the '07, '08 year, so we know what those numbers are. The other numbers are balance sheet figures for your cash position, and frankly, those are coming right out of our annual financial report, which is not completed and audited, because, remember, it's completed and reviewed by an outside auditing firm. That is not completed until about October timeframe. So we couldn't really reference the the June 30th, '07 cash position, because it wouldn't be consistent audited numbers what we use. So we used '06 figures in order to be consistent. And that's the difference, budget figures versus balance sheet figures for cash and reserves. Correct, Ron?
Correct.
And, Mr. Starbird, this would conclude this-
This would conclude, unless there's other areas you'd like to get into, or more information you'd like on the reserves and cash position, this would conclude this segment. We would anticipate at your next, am I done already?
Yes, you are.
This, this would, our next study session, we would anticipate taking up the topic of Fire Station 26 in Casa Verdugo Library, and the whole topic of Northwest Library needs. Following that, we'd move into a discussion of likely some, some of the open space and park discussions following that. It's important that we have Fire Station 26 in Casa Verdugo first, in order to preserve our mayor's ability to participate in the balance of those discussions.
So the next study session, the mayor can stay home?
Well, unless we get past Fire Station 26 in Casa Verdugo in that first meeting, and we might move on to some of the topics in which you'd want to participate.
I wouldn't bet on it.
Okay, and this list of 20 or so CIP topics are, except for Fire Station being placed near the front, they are not placed in any order of importance or any priority, it's just a, a scheduling matter.
Grouping.
And the only thing-
If I can, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Draymond asked roughly the same question in a conversation we had yesterday. Part of the difficulty we're having is, is I, I believe this process will be a little iterative in nature. Some of these items, let's just take, let's just take the topic of open space generally. We'll probably need to get a sense as to the council's interests in open space, types of open space, funding needs, and then may have to return to that topic again, as you've gone through other components of the CIP, so you get the full picture of what's in the CIP program, and then you can begin to tell us definitively in our CIP, okay, we want X amount of dollars in this year for this potential acquisition or development. Whether, I mean, things like dog parks, we have conceptually some concepts on it, but until we become a little more refined, it'll be hard to actually pin some numbers on it. So I'm seeing some of this being a little iterative in process, go through it, get some feedback, see what we need to refine, then come back and touch base again to get a little more refined specific direction as to what you'd like us to do, or what the priorities are. Now, preceding that, we do need to bring to some conclusion Fire Station 26 in Casa Verdugo. Even if that conclusion is, you know what, we're going to definitively say we're not going to deal with it in the first or second year of the CIP, then we free up your time to participate in the balance of those. So we do need to get specific direction, we'd like specific direction on 26 in Casa Verdugo, even if that is to say it's not going to be part of our planning for the next year or the next two years, in order to preserve the whole council's ability to engage in the balance of the CIP.
Okay. And I just want to state that I think as, as a councilman, as a mayor, it's my job to ask questions, sometimes probing questions, and the, the nature of those questions does not reveal in any way the inclination I have to rate a fund or to preserve a fund. I just am trying to get the facts at this point, and if the questions in any way seemed as though I was guarding a sacred cow in the fund world, that, that's not true, I'm just trying to get the, the facts, so we can get into a more in-depth and more intelligent discussion further on down the line as we look at the projects. And if there, Mr. Draymond?
Yeah, there is some, something else. I'd like to make a couple of comments here. I wanted to wait till the end, simply because I didn't want to interrupt the, what was going on any further. But, and I'd rather say it here than say it in an open session, the council meeting. You know, I guess you can also, the public, to any extent that they're listening, can also put this down, as there's a concern that Mr. Weaver and I are always going to be on the same side of every issue here, we never have been, and we never will be, probably, of every issue, and, and the issue that he mentions is clearly one of them. But I just want to take exception to a couple of things, Mr. Mayor, because it was presented here in this session, the idea that it was proven that there was no public safety issue, that never occurred. I sat in this audience out here as, as a civic leader. The chief of police was brought before, not on his own, he didn't just show up, he was asked to come here, he stood at that podium. He was asked specific questions. The specific questions were increase in violent crime in Montrose, no, increase in muggings, no, rapes, no, burglaries, no. And we're told, staff concluded that there is no public safety issue. Baloney. Baloney. As merchants in that district, we see every day the kind of public safety issues we were discussing, and that we brought to this council. You weren't here, Mr. Mayor, but Mr. Gomez was. Slip and Falls, and I brought in here, when I kept hearing this nonsense that night, a list of the people just that I knew in our community, who had irreparable injuries, including my own father, who eight years ago, who fell in the dark up there because there was no pedestrian lighting in a pedestrian mall. One of the oldest pedestrian malls in the United States, no pedestrian lighting, with twists and turns and cutouts and curb extensions and concrete seating areas, and café seating, which reduces the passable area down to a few feet in places, bedding areas, who fell and shattered his legs eight years ago, his leg eight years ago, and wore the brace I bought, brought here that night, the rest of his life. Vito Canella, who is a very highly respected member of this community, whose wife fell out there in the dark, who is today still recuperating years later from the injuries there. Alice Russell, one of our board members, who's today the vice president, the treasurer of the MSPA, a fairly young person who fell out there in the dark. So the list goes on and on and on and on, and that was the reason for the aspect of the public safety, not because of rapes, not because of robberies, not because of personal assaults, not because of violent crime, but because of those kind of issues that are basic, lighting in a commercial district, basic. And, Mr. Mayor, since you brought it up, the issue about how does lighting bring about those kinds of retail improvements? Ask Mr. Caruso whether he plans to have nighttime lighting at the Americana, of course he does, because people will not go to an area to shop, to dine, to stroll, to eat, to enjoy the benefits there in the dark. So yes, I mean, I understand that, that retail is an area that I understand a little better than, than some on this council, because that is my background. But, but yes, the two go hand in hand, and I believe that is why this city council voted for those improvements. MSPA's position, as the former president, two-term president of that organization, has never claimed that we did all of that. However, the city of Glendale never came to the MSPA, nor the chamber, nor anyone else up there, to say what can we do to improve the lighting there, what can we do to fix the sidewalks, et cetera. MSPA is the one that did that, MSPA is the one that came to this organization, and I believe wisely, the majority of the council at the time, voted to make those improvements as an investment in this city. And I would rather make the statement here than in, than at city council, because why do that?
Mr. Mayor, I won't comment, I don't want to get into that with Mr. Draymond, I have too much respect for him. And obviously, he took me out of context, too, so may I move to adjourn?
You just did.
Thank you for your time.
Second?
I'll second that.
We are adjourned.